Well, honey is, yes, that's our mischievous dog. Yeah, well, good evening, everybody. It's, it's good to, uh, it's good to see you tonight. We were just talking about, uh, Honey back there in the back, sort of barking a little bit. She's known as the, uh, the troublemaker at all of our, uh, all of our, yes, I'm talking about you, honey. And, uh, so anyway, it's good to see everybody. If you'll go ahead and stand, um, Kai'Sa McMeans and Caroline Quickle are going to lead us in the pledge. Come up here to the front. Don't be bashful. Come on.
Don't be nervous.
We won't bite.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can go ahead and be seated. Next, uh, on our agenda is a special presentation, one we're SBA Northeast District Director and member of the Kingsport Nation. I'll turn the, I'll turn it over to you right now, Melissa.
Well deserved, well deserved.
We'll get a picture here.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. See you guys next month. The convince.
All right.
I want to go ahead and just thank, uh, Coach Butcher, um, for, for leading the charge, um, on us getting to that, uh, Board of Distinction level and, uh, appreciate you and, and all you have done, um, for our school system and how you continue to push us as board members, uh, to do our very best, uh, for, for our students and our teachers. So, thank you, my friend. Next on the agenda is our consent items. Uh, first, you'll see the minutes of the September fifteenth Board Meeting. Then we have our financial reports. Then we have our surplus and obsolete items. Uh, most of those are from Tennessee High School, some from Avoca and Hanesfield. Our, um, 2025 Compliance Report to the Tennessee Department of Education. And then we also have a separation agreement on there as well. Uh, do I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Penny?
Vice Chair Butcher?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Secretary Darnell?
Yes.
Chair Cuddy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, uh, is a hearing of our delegates, uh, tonight. Uh, we'll have, uh, Principal Kayla McMeans will present, and then, uh, the fourth grade students will perform a song, uh, from their upcoming Veterans Day program. Uh, so, Ms. McMeans, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for allowing Holston View to come and share tonight. You can see I brought lots of friends with me. Um, their performance is coming up on November eleventh at six thirty, and they wanted to invite you to see that. And you'll get to see a snippet of their performance tonight. I do not want to try to follow their presentations. I'm going to go first, and we're going to show a video that just highlights some of our students and staff at Holston View. Nestled in the heart of Bristol, Tennessee, Holston View Elementary has been the cornerstone of learning in communities. It's opening its doors in August nineteen seventy-two. From the moment it was built, the school was designed with a vision of its time. One that promoted teacher collaboration in an open classroom environment that inspired connection, creativity, and shared learning. Over the years, Holston View has built a proud tradition of excellence. But what makes Holston View special is it found in awards or accolades. It is found within these walls, and the teachers and staff who pour their hearts into every lesson. And in the students whose curiosity and joy flow through halls each day. Together, we continue to build our future, one filled with learning, kindness, and pride of being part of something bigger. This is Holston View Elementary. Tradition meets innovation, and where every child's story begins.
When Holston View comes to my mind, it's so exciting and joyful to be here.
Learning.
Think of Holston View, we think of.
Family.
You, we think of.
Excellence.
Fun.
When I think of Holston View, I think of the future.
Think of Holston View, we think of.
Inclusion.
Holston View is welcoming.
When I think of Holston View, I think of family.
Think of Holston View, we think of.
Pod life.
Holston View is resilient.
When I think of kindness.
When I think of Holston View, I think of family.
When I think of Holston View, I'm happy for you to join.
You, we think of family.
Holston View means to me the multiple generations that I have taught by here at Holston View.
If, when I think about Holston View, I think about friends.
Fun.
Amazing.
One word that we think describes Holston View is.
Teamwork.
When I think of Holston View, I think of happiness, friendship, love.
When I think of Holston View, I feel good.
When I think of Holston View, I think of kindness.
When I think of Holston View, I think of love.
When I think of Holston View, I think of.
Learning.
When I think of Holston View, I think of friendship.
Think of Holston View, we think of.
Teamwork.
When I think of Holston View, I think of friends.
When I think of Holston View, I think of family.
So at this time, I would like to turn it over to our kiddos and our music teacher, Valerie Pickard.
Great job, kiddos. Thank you so much, uh, for being here tonight to share with us. Good luck on November the eleventh. Uh, thank you all. Um, parents, you don't have to stay. Sorry, y'all have to. Uh, Coach McMeans, I think you need to stay. Hurts our, uh, our feelings if we don't have anybody to talk to. We gotta feel a little bored. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, uh, comments from the public. Do we have any tonight? Uh, next is our TISA Accountability Report Public Comment. This is the portion of the meeting that allows for participation from school personnel, parents, students, and any other interested parties to contribute feedback prior to the submission of our TISA Accountability Report to the State Department of Education. The TISA Public School Funding Formula marks a significant change in how Tennessee invests in public education. The TISA Funding Formula updates the way Tennessee funds public education for the first time in over thirty years to empower each student to read proficiently by third grade, prepare each high school graduate for post-secondary success, and provide resources needed for all students to ensure they succeed. As part of TISA, TCA forty-nine dash three dash one twelve requires each school district to submit an annual accountability report to the Tennessee Department of Education. This report must include goals for student achievement, explanation how the district's stated goals can be met within the district's budget. Each district's TISA Accountability Report is required to be presented to the public for review and comment before the report is submitted to the department. The report must be submitted annually to the department by November first. Penny, if you'll pull up the webpage to show, uh, the room here where to access the report and how to access the feedback form, and then with that, I will kick it over to Dr. Scott to take us the rest of the way.
Thank you all for being here tonight. One thing that we want to put in front of you, if you, if you don't mind, we go back to the Okay, great. So right here, when you come to this location on our website, clearly states the three goals that we have.
Here we are live. So when you go to our website, you'll see there is an account, uh, TISA Accountability Location. We'll walk you back through that in just a second, but when you get here, the three goals are clearly stated under District Goals. So this plan that you will see, uh, linked here below, will focus on, on achieving those three goals. So there's two links here. You'll see the detailed plan. Please visit that, peruse that, look at that. Uh, and then the next link, you will be able to give us feedback related to that plan, and we're certainly open to that feedback. We actually leave this opportunity for feedback up all year long, so, uh, uh, we, of course, would love to have it between now and November first, but if something comes to mind later on, please jump in and add that, and we will consider that throughout the year in preparation for the following year in planning. Any questions or any immediate feedback you'd like to share related to the process? And thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Right there, and you went to menu to get to there, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is old business, uh, policy on second reading. Dr. Tudor is recommending board approval of the advertising and distribution of materials in schools. Do I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Penny?
Vice Chair Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Secretary Darnell?
Yes.
Chair Cuddy?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is our new business. Uh, first, we have our Public School Security Grant. Dr. Tudor is recommending board approval of our security grant application for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Penny?
Secretary Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butcher?
Yes.
Chair Cuddy?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Next, Dr. Tudor is recommending board approval of the Access for All Learning Network Application for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Uh, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Penny for call roll?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Secretary Darnell?
Yes.
Chair Cuddy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butcher?
Yes.
Next, Dr. Tudor is recommending board approval of the Preschool Access for All Network Application for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve this preschool access application.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Penny?
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butcher?
Yes.
Secretary Darnell?
Yes.
Chair Cuddy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Next, Dr. Tudor is recommending board approval of the Stronger Connections Grant. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Penny, if you'll call the roll?
Secretary Darnell?
Yes.
Chair Cuddy?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Next, Dr. Tudor is recommending board approval of the Early Literacy Pre-K Teacher Stipends Application for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five. Do I have a motion?
I move we accept the Early Literacy Pre-K Teacher Stipends Application.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Penny?
Secretary Darnell?
Yes.
Chair Cuddy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butcher?
Yes.
Next, Dr. Tudor is recommending board approval of the Beyond Ordinary Learning Opportunities, also known as BOLO, application for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Uh, motion?
I'll say move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Penny?
Vice Chair Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Chair Cuddy?
Yes.
Secretary Darnell?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is a report from Dr. Tudor.
Thank you. Um, so thank you, Holston View. I'm sorry you have to sit over on that side of the room all by yourself. All your friends left you, but thank you for your reports. Certainly thank Ms. Pickard and her crew for such a beautiful rendition. We love when students come. Um, I wrote, as you guys were playing your video, I wrote down words, and of course, you know, as a leader of this district, you depend on me to talk about things like data and achievement and... But what struck me was that really wasn't the focus, and that's what makes Holston View so special, is the things that, that were said by your staff and students, teamwork, family, collaboration. Multiple people said love, and family was mentioned multiple times. I think that's what makes Holston View so special. So thank you for contributing to that culture and that environment and continuing to enhance what's going on there. It holds a special place in my heart. You know that. I've always went there, but, um, thank you for all you do, and please thank your folks and your students for being here. We do love it when they come. Um, I wish I could tell everybody in the room and reiterate what Ms. Wood said, but I'm gonna repeat it for you all. I really do want to commend the school board for earning a Board of Distinction recognition. The last time they earned it, it's in that plaque on the back of the wall, and I think that says two thousand eight to two thousand ten. So it's been over fifteen years since we've had that recognition in this district, and it is not easy. Um, a lot of what's required in the checklist that, you know, to earn the distinction, we already do, but there were several things that we don't do, and we really had to, to focus our attention and work on that. It was Mr. Butcher's idea, and he really pushed it for, not pushed it, he encouraged us to do it for a couple of years. And I believe it really, gosh, it, I think it helped us grow as a board together, helped me really grow in working with you all. Particularly, the board retreat was one of the new things that we hadn't done since, even since I was a supervisor in this district, and I think it was extremely impactful and very helpful for us. So I appreciate you all doing that. I wanted you all to know that they really do continue to work behind the scenes for you all in multiple ways, even when it doesn't feel like it, they didn't do it for the plaque. They did it because it was the right thing to do for the school system, and I appreciate that. So, thank you to this board. Um, October is National Principals Month. Most of them are in the room, so just want to acknowledge and thank our, our dedicated principals, obviously, as Ms. McMeans showed about Holston View. That's what these people are rock stars and do every day in their buildings. Um, I could spout off multiple things that they do, but I won't know what they do on a day in and day out basis, but I do want to call attention to it for the people who are not in the room, who are watching online. Um, Mr. John Srolls at Anderson, Ms. Denise McKee at Avoca, Trey Arrington at Fairmount, Tanika Harden at Hanesfield, Kayla McMeans at Holston View, Dr. Dowdett at Tennessee Middle School, Kim Kirk at Tennessee High School, and Keith Parker at TOPPS. They work diligently for students, day in and day out, and we wouldn't be the amazing school system we are without them. So I thank them every day for their dedication. And then finally, I just want to draw attention to congratulating Ms. Kirk and Dr. Daniels and Dr. Coleman for their work and partnership with the Sullivan County Health Department. At a recent, um, home football game and a school day, our students and community, over seven hundred, I think I heard, seven hundred and fifteen was the last number I heard, earned, something similar to that?
Yeah.
Um, were trained in hands-only CPR. And it's initiative, it's a, it's a focus of the Sullivan County Health Department and the Health Council. Um, we beat DB, I'm proud to say. I'm not going to say who we didn't beat, but we beat DB, so that was good. Um, in training, the number of students and community members who were trained in hands-only CPR. And I looked up some statistics. Folks who are, um, treated with hands-only CPR are two or three times more likely to survive a catastrophic event than those who are not treated with anything. So, and I, and people feel more comfortable doing hands-only. There's not the mouth-to-mouth and those sorts of things that go with that. But it does really, literally save lives, so I appreciate you all taking the time out of your school day to do that and certainly setting that up outside of a football game. It really is impactful for our entire community. So thank you for helping to save those lives, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is comments from the City Council. Ms. Aker? Yes, so they can hear you online.
Well, I've lost my audience. I was going to talk about the Pumpkin Palooza this Saturday. So I'll go over the Halloween stuff in case anybody needs to know here that has kids at home. So this Saturday, um, Pumpkin Palooza, pumpkin decorating from nine to eleven downtown. Uh, the costume contest at Cumberland State Park, Cumberland Square Park is at nine forty-five. Then the Monster Mash and trick-or-treating local businesses from five to seven, and the parade at seven o'clock. And then just wanted to tell her I hope everyone had a wonderful fall break, and congrats to y'all on your recognition. That's awesome. And I love seeing Holston View up here. That's, um, where my kids went, and I love it so much. And, uh, and the Principals Month, congrats and to all the principals that are in the audience, and hope y'all get some recognition this month, and hope the kids are extra nice to you. So, that's all. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Right, if you can, um, and you may have already done this, and if you have, just, but if, if, if somebody can send us some info on, on the events for Saturday, we'll make sure to post it on our social media. I know the city's probably pushed it, but we'll also push it on our, our social media.
Yeah, it's on our social media if you want to share it or consent it either.
Okay, yeah, we, we can do that.
All right. Anything else?
All right, thank you. Uh, next is comments from the board.
Coach? Everybody looks at me. Yes, yes, I have comments. Um, really neat to, uh, you know, be recognized as a Board of Distinction, but I've been Really neat to, you know, be recognized as a Board of Distinction, but I'd be remiss if it had been an ongoing process. I came on this board in 2013, and we've had a lot of folks that have contributed to make us a better and better board. We just went through the process in the last couple of years to really make it final. Dr. David Welch, Nelson Pyle, Jill Harrison, and Derek Linkus have all been a part of the board and have done a great deal, and these folks up here. So we're really proud of what we've accomplished, but we're going to, you know, we'll try to repeat. That's a big thing. And also, it's a great time to be a member of Sullivan County right now, educationally, public school, because I just recently saw where Dr. Holly Flora, Chief Academic Officer of Kingsport City Schools, has been recognized as a 2024 State of Tennessee Supervisor of the Year finalist. So that's Kingsport. We, of course, have the Superintendent of the Year, Annette Tudor as Superintendent of the Year, so, you know, I would encourage folks listening and stuff and watching that, you know, if you're looking for a school of choice, try Sullivan County. Try the city of Bristol. Try the city of Kingsport. I think we're doing great things. We're proving that we're doing great things every day, and like to continue to thank our boards, Alderman, county commissions, and everything for supporting education in Sullivan County and the cities of Bristol and Kingsport. We appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I just want to reiterate what Dr. Tudor said about principals. I don't think general public realizes how much they do behind the scenes. So we appreciate you so much.
Yeah, I'll do to that. I also want to congratulate Isla Cersei for qualifying for the state tournament. She finished at top for 15th out of about 50 individuals. We had two other girls who were really, really close to qualifying, so I appreciate their coach, Cheryl Flick, for all he has done with the girls' team this year. Anybody else? All right. Next meeting is December the 15th at 6:00 p.m. Hope y'all have a great rest of the week and a good Thanksgiving. We'll see y'all back then. We're dismissed.